Is there any report of that?
Well, Mr. Mayor, there was no action taken at that time, so there's nothing to report.
Okay.
It was an educational process.
Okay, and the closed session has not yet occurred. That will be transferred from 6:30 to follow the City Council. So if you want to hear the result of that, you can hang around after City Council for about half an hour. It's exciting in here when you're all by yourself. So, okay, we'll proceed to our invocation pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Leonard. Please stand.
Our heads. Father and heaven, we thank you once again for the gift of life and your love and watch care over us. We pray for your blessing upon all the residents of the city and visitors. Everybody fighting this terrible flu. I pray that it goes here upon people who feel that would make them feel better. We also pray that you agree with us for this meeting that will come to decisions that will be the best for our great city. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one motion under our individual with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any added or deleted items?
No, sir.
Okay, this is the chance for the public to make spurious comments having nothing to do with the agenda.
I actually have something if nobody from the public steps up.
We'll take note of that. Any comments from the public, non-agendized items? There's none, so...
Okay. I just wanted to read something real quick, and this is on behalf of the Sheriff's Department. Today, we had a funeral service for one of our long-term deputies who actually spent a good majority of his career here in the city of Loma Linda. And I'm going to read a little something here from the sheriff. But it is, today is also National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So I wanted to extend appreciation to our Chief of Police and Pat O'Brien, and thank you very much for your service, sir. Today, on National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, we laid our brother Larry to rest. After a long and dedicated career of 43 years, he can now rest knowing that his partners will continue his legacy. In 1974, he started as a reserve deputy assigned to the Mountain Search and Rescue Team, which is considered an elite team of expert trail and rock climbers who rescue lost and injured hikers. Larry knew he had one more, he had more to offer the department and wanted to do it full-time. And we learned today from his services that he was actually a nurse.
Yes.
A nurse and was kind of involved in the medical field, was probably going to go one way and took a turn and went the other way. Joined the Sheriff's Department, the 67th Sheriff's Academy, and I believe that was right around 1981, right, when he joined? Larry always knew his career path, which was to work patrol and coordinate the search and rescue team. And this is from Sheriff McMahon. Our central station employees saw Larry as the deputy who always went the extra mile. Larry had a heart of gold and loved to help others, but he hated any spotlight or recognition. He would probably hate us talking about him right now. But this is in recognition to Deputy Larry Falcie from the Sheriff's Department. Thank you.
Thank you for that. It was quite sobering to hear what happened to him. Yeah, he was off-duty and he was assaulted by...
Yeah, he was in an off-duty traffic collision, and then when he was interacting with the other driver, the other driver assaulted him, and he passed away as a result of those injuries. So the driver's in custody and the DA is prosecuting on a murder charge.
And there's, there's something special about someone who has the opportunity to retire at 30 years and keeps working. There's something special about that person. Yeah, it's coming up for all of us. Okay, we will go then to our numbered items. We have the consent calendar first.
Oh, second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Item number five is new business, June 5, general municipal election. City clerk.
The 2018 general municipal election is scheduled for June 5 to elect two members to the City Council for four-year terms. The seats available are those currently held by Councilmembers Duper and Daley. The city of Loma Linda consolidates its general municipal election with a primary election, which is carried out by the registrar of voters, which is a cost savings to the city. The filing period for nomination papers begins on Monday, February 12 and ends Friday, March 9. Should an incumbent not file during that period, it will be extended to March 15. However, at that point, an incumbent who had not filed will not be able to file. Should only the number of qualified candidates file by March 11, the election may be canceled pursuant to the elections code, as we've had happen here a couple, two or three times recently.
Just a clarification, the deadline is March 9, but yet they have until the 11th to file? Shouldn't they be filing by the 9th? Yeah, okay. Otherwise, neither one, they'd be about in trouble.
No, I have our applications in by February 12.
My mistake, I apologize. The elections code provides for a tie vote to be resolved by lot, the tossing of a coin or drawing envelopes, or by special election. If a runoff election is chosen, it is to be held not less than 40, nor more, nor more than 125 days after the declaration of results. In November of 2001, the City Council adopted Resolution 2206, providing for a runoff election should a tie occur. With the exception of the March 2000 election, which resulted in a tie vote resolved by coin toss, the City Council has chosen to break a tie vote by runoff election. Council Bill R. 2018-01 provides for a tie vote to be resolved by special election. Should the City Council desire to resolve a tie vote by lot, we would need to amend that resolution to include the by lot language. And that is, that is that the first, the first resolution, Council Bill 2018-01 calls and gives notice for the election. 2018-02 adopts the regulations pertaining to candidate statements, and it's recommended by staff to approve those.
Can we make a motion to move it, or do we need, I make the motion? Both bills.
Second. Okay, does that, when you said we would change to by lot language by amendment, can we do that amendment now?
Should you, should you choose to want to, if there is a tie, resolve it by lot versus a runoff election? We would need to amend it.
Would we amend it now if you chose to?
Yes.
Okay, because I would be in favor of that amendment, because I don't see the, the point of having a special election, which is a very expensive thing to do. I'd rather just flip a coin or something. And it doesn't happen very often, it's happened once to us, and it probably will never happen again. But if it does, I'm a cheapskate. Only costs a quarter. It could be a penny.
I don't, I think you get the penny back.
Yeah, but last time it rolled under the table. Were you there? It rolled under the table. It's probably still there. Yeah, it's, we, what we do is we amend the, how did you say? We amend the code to incorporate the bylaws.
We would amend Council Bill 2018-01 to include the language to resolve a tie vote by lot versus a special election.
Flip a coin. Yeah, but according to what you guys moved and seconded, without amendment, it would go to a special election if there was a tie, which is a very expensive thing to do.
I follow.
So I'm saying just amend it to do it by lot, which is a more inexpensive way to resolve a tie.
Well...
There's a motion to amend.
Does that, does that forever change the bylaw?
Just for this, just for this election, it can be changed. Every time we call the election, it can be changed.
I just, I don't like the idea of choosing someone based on flipping a coin.
There's a one in a thousand chance that this will happen.
So therefore, don't even worry about it.
But if it does happen, I'm a cheapskate. I've, that's, I've declared where my vote will land.
So that would be your only concern, the cost of letting people vote again?
Absolutely.
Special election cost what?
$10,000.
So this is a $10,000 move we're making?
It's a $10 move, because it's a $10,000 move with a one in a thousand chance of ever happening. So it's about a $10 move.
I don't know, lately we've had a lot, it looks across the country, there's been a lot of close elections, you never know.
But it's, you know, how often does a coin land on its edge?
I don't know, I think, I think in the case of a tie, you almost have a chance to go out and re-engage and...
You want to?
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, I mean, because it could happen to anybody, we're kind of setting a precedent moving forward.
Yeah, I, to be honest with you, when that happened between Brower and Harrison, I, I just, it seemed so non-democratic, you know?
Well, they clearly didn't care which one, because they gave each the same number of votes. So that's the democratic angle.
Well, I wouldn't say they didn't care, I think the people that voted for one cared, and the people voted for the other cared, cared, they cared.
But the populace, but...
Now I have to rely on, you know, a flip of a coin, that's my concern with that.
The demos didn't care. So, okay, let's, okay, I will second Councilman Leonard's motion, and then we will vote on the amendment first. Well, we'll find out when he votes. Do you want to comment, or do you want to just surprise us with your vote?
I'm going to disappoint Councilman Leonard.
Leonard's young, so...
So, so the motion is to amend the 2008 dash, whatever it is, 01, which one is it?
Yeah, 01.
So to amend that, the language in it, before we vote on approving it, to say that if there's a tie vote, we will use a by lot approach as opposed to a special election, which is much more expensive. So those in favor of the, those in favor of the amendment say aye. Aye? Those opposed say no.
No.
And those who are abstaining and making this a tie?
What are you doing? What's your vote?
So it's a tie.
Abstained.
Anybody have a coin?
I figure at my age and stage, if I get voted out, then, you know, okay.
Yeah, you can flip a coin for my vote.
Do you want to be voted out twice? Or voted out once and coin flipped out?
Well, if he abstains, that's a tie vote, what do we do then?
We flip a coin.
The motion, the motion doesn't care, it doesn't pass.
So it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't care. So we go back to motion number one, which is keep things as they are?
Keep things as they are, which means we continue to debate if there's a tie.
Okay, I have a question of the city attorney. Can we amend this later?
I, once the election is called, I think now is the time to determine the procedures.
So we can't change it later?
Well, I'm not sure there's anything in the election code, but my understanding is when we call the election is the appropriate time to set the ground rules.
Okay, I'd like to offer a facetious amendment, that the $10,000 be borne by the, the people who voted no. No, it's facetious.
Let me ask the city clerk. What's the probability of this occurring? In other words, are there a lot of people showing an interest in running? I remember when...
How would she know? We haven't even...
It doesn't have to do with the running.
This starts the ball rolling, how would she know?
Yeah, no, I understand that.
So are there, are there a bunch of horses in the starting gate? Is that your question?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't matter to me, it's...
I had one question from a resident about two or three months ago about the election. Other than that, nothing from anybody.
And I know who that was.
It doesn't matter to me, it really doesn't.
Yeah.
I'm willing to gird my loins and campaign like Abraham Lincoln if I need to.
But this isn't about the campaign.
It's really not about the campaign, it's about the outcome, which...
But it's what happens if there's a tied outcome.
Which is extremely unlikely, but if it happens...
Yeah, it has happened.
I guess it just depends on the campaign too, you know, like if you had a, if you had a pretty contentious campaign and it really polarized people, I, I like to give people the opportunity to actually do it by vote as opposed to making a decision like that.
When you and I ran the first time, there were what, six people running?
Yes.
Six people, and it was the top two vote-getters. I mean, that's, that's a pretty robust system.
Yeah, but it's possible that you can have six people or seven people, and two of those people could be tied.
Tied at the top two.
In fact, the chances are even higher.
Well, the top two tied is not a problem, it's the number two and three that are the problem.
Or it could be one, two, three.
Because there are two slots. Yeah, it could be a three-way tie, and then you'd have to have, you'd have to throw...
Three-sided coin.
You'd have to throw a twisted Rubik's Cube.
See, that's why the coin wouldn't work.
My concern is if we keep talking about this, people are going to want to vote Duper and Daley out, because we can't make a decision.
Oh, no.
If it's a three-way tie, we use...
You're the one who couldn't make a decision. Duper made a decision, you didn't.
You're right.
Okay, so that failed, now we will go, unless you want to change your vote. Unless you want to change your vote.
No, it's over. You can't do it over.
He was debating whether he should not vote.
He said abstain. You wanted the changing from abstain to something else? You can't do that.
Who has the hammer?
Oh, good lord. It really doesn't matter. At my age and stage, I'm floating through life now.
Thor has spoken. Okay.
Time, time, not money.
Okay, so now we'll move to the primary motion for, I think it's a consolidation of items five A and B, correct? Is that what the motion was?
Yeah, unless they have to be made separate.
Okay, they don't have to be made separately, so, okay. Is there any further discussion?
Just want to clarify to make sure that it's clear that the following deadline for the incumbents is March 9, not the 11th.
Yes.
Filing begins February 12 and ends March 9.
Correct.
And is that, is March 9 a Friday?
Yes.
And will you be here until 5:00 PM?
Yes, I will.
Sharp?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Or later.
My first filing was at 4:59 PM, so I have to keep that very strict. Yes. So, okay, those in favor of this motion and second, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no.
I was just wondering, if we don't move this, what happens? I just have curiosity. Do we have to?
Yeah, what if we decide not to have an election?
I think the election code requires you to hold the election.
So if you, so if two of us vote no, are we going to jail?
I suppose somebody could go to court then.
Yeah, but it doesn't carry the day. The election code requires the body to pass it, but does it require everyone to vote yes?
If the body fails to act, a court could impose an order.
We could put a...
Theoretically, I, I don't know that's ever occurred.
But my question is, my question is...
Loma Linda could make history.
It's less likely to happen than flipping a coin.
If two votes of no come through and the body passes it...
Doesn't matter.
Then there would be no penalty on those two for saying no.
Of course not.
No.
Well, he's, he's equivocating.
Not, not that I'm aware of. I don't report to be an election code expert.
We have, we have observers that are really impressed with the level of our discussion here.
I think we all...
The issue of refusing to have the election has not come up in my legal practice heretofore.
These are the hot topics in Loma Linda.
Yeah, see, I, I have a particular disdain for votes that have no authority and are not really a vote. It's a sham. So this, what we just, just did was a sham vote.
Why?
We're required to vote yes.
We've got, we've got an audience out here that are learning about civics.
Yes, and they're learning that it's a messy business.
Depends on who's in charge.
Learning that it's a trivial business about how do we get re-elected.
So if it scares them away from, from politics, it's not all a bad thing.
Yeah, I guess.
Unfortunately.
So, okay, I will declare that that vote passed unanimously.
Correct.
Okay.
To have an election, it's a waste of time.
No, the, the tie vote.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yes, and I echo that concern.
Well...
Okay, any reports of councilmen? Any reports of officers? Oh, okay.
I don't have a report, but a question. And, and I'm going to keep penetrating on two issues here. One is, in the last meeting, we had Loma Linda University in here with a signage plan. And the issue that I raised was the median in front of the surgical hospital that looks like crap because they've got weeds all over it. And we got, we eked out some promises that sounded very encouraging to me. I've seen no change.
Okay.
What, what do we need to do, or what do I need to do, or what can we get the mayor to do to amp up the pressure?
Do you know Gerhard's address?
We are getting blown off.
I, I will, the city would just do it. I do it.
What's that?
The city would just do it, I would do it.
Yeah, but that's not right.
Can we, can we do it, can we do it like we do weed abatement and just charge it to them?
Yes.
That's how it's supposed to be, but they refuse, so yes, I, we can, I'm going to go ahead and force them to.
Because...
Because...
No, 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 what happened is that they're supposed to put in the landscape assessment district.
Right.
And so that we will maintain, and then they're supposed to pay us to maintain that landscape median, just like the, the rest of them, but...
So we have the authority to go in and clean it up so it looks decent?
Yes.
Since that's an entryway to our city?
Yes.
And charge the university?
Yes, I will.
Then, then what, what can I do to emphasize I want to see that done?
I...
Because this is an ongoing problem, and I'm just plain frustrated.
Yes.
Do you want me to tackle it? He suggested I could do that.
Yes.
If, if, you have a better pool than I do, so...
I won't tackle the problem, and then, and then if I'm unsuccessful, I think this is, I think this is an instruction to the staff to pursue something analogous to our weed abatement program.
And, and send them a bill. Because this is, this is an issue of credibility and integrity. And, and I'm telling you, I'm, I'm frustrated.
Yes, sir.
It's just not right.
I, I don't, what item do you have on the agenda? Because you're going to give us a...
He's got item six. This is, this is the one that you asked me, update on...
Item six.
Item six.
Unfortunately, my agenda doesn't show it.
It says capital improvement project update.
See, in the last meeting, you asked me what's going on at Redlands in California and also at Mountain View. So, so you asked me...
The, the Mountain View exit?
But since, it's probably linked to what you're going to say, but I do have three quick comments, just in general. And speaking of medians, over on Mission, there is a set of medians that's, I don't know who's taking care of it, but it's not very nice, at the very end of Mission.
Yes, and I will address that, yes.
Okay, and then also the median admission in California, right on California Street, the bushes are getting too big, and it's really hard to see traffic coming both directions. So that needs to be trimmed down. It's actually a big...
On Red, Redland, Cal...
California Street, on California. There's a little median right there, because if you make a left into that...
Yes.
Shopping center, it's hard to see the cars.
Okay.
And vice versa, if you're coming off Mission, it's hard to see what's going on over there.
Okay.
And then the last item that's Public Works related is, at the bottom of Mountain View, just before Van Louven, you're going to update us on where you're going to fix it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And this evening, I got complaints from people who live on Mission that the sidewalk is falling apart.
Yes, I asked her to email me, yes.
Yes, and I understand there's also some kind of a dispute with the HOA about whose responsibility it is?
That, I don't know, I didn't talk to them.
Well, according, according to the HOA company, they, they keep coming to the city with issues over sidewalk repair and curb repair, because apparently there's a bunch of curb repair.
Yes.
And so there's some debate on who's responsible for that.
We are, because it's in public right of way.
I know that, but they're being told that their, their claim is that they're being told by somebody here at the city that they're responsible for it.
No.
And so I don't know, I know they're not talking to you, and, and I'm not talking to you, and I don't even know, again, I can't verify, I don't know the veracity of all that, but...
Yeah.
Their claim to the board is that they're coming to the city and the city's turning them away and telling them, you either pay for it yourself or tough luck. And then, not to hammer on that, but they're also claiming that the slurry seal that you put down in there is cracking. I don't know.
Yeah, the slurry seal is just nothing but oil and sand, so yes, it can crack.
Yeah, slurry seal is not perfect.
I imagine after this rain, a lot of that stuff will be washed off.
I guess, John, before you make your presentation, the overriding concern that I have is that we want our, our city to be kept neat and trimmed...
Yes.
And appropriate and attractive. And when we have partners like Loma Linda University that don't take that seriously, you know, I, I want to be sure we, we have appropriate mechanisms to encourage them and incentivize them to do that, or pay us to do that for them. And I don't see that as unreasonable in any way.
I will contact him tomorrow. And we will go ahead and take care of ourselves and then contact him and ask him to sign up for landscape assessment district like they're supposed to.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, well, and I think it was the last county, city council meeting, you asked me for the status of a couple of projects here in town, so I want to go over a couple of them. This is overall what's going on in town. The one that says CIP, that's a city project, and the one that doesn't have CIP on it, that's a private development. Yes, this is North... Yes, this is I-10 freeway. This is Mountain View. This is California. And Barton, Barton Road right here. Are you with me? Okay, so, oops, sorry. The one that you asked me earlier, last meeting, was at the intersection of Redlands and California. This is the project that's currently out for advertisement to bid. The bid opening is next Tuesday, and scheduled a water contract on January 23. This is the existing condition, where we have a California street and kind of jock onto Redlands Boulevard. This is the flood control channel, okay? So what we are doing is we're going to put in the reinforced concrete box covert. It's going to be pre-cased, put in the channel right here, and after the box is in, then we put in the pavement over the box covert, so that at the intersection itself, the street will line out with the north side of Redlands Boulevard.
And, and the funding for the proposed changes are coming from?
Yes, there's a two-funding source. First is from, from the remaining bond money for RDA. We have about $3 million left in there. The second funding source is come from a development impact fee for traffic mitigation. So for the subdivision that we built on the, the east side of California, the west side of California, that to pay into this part.
So even though this benefits the city of Redlands property more than Loma Linda, we're covering it?
Yes, because, because we, I have been talking to them for many years, and they said that priority is other location, but not this one. So to us, we have more development going on on California than on... The, the construction portion is about 3.5 million. The total project costs about $4 million. The total project costs about four million dollars.
And since you said that you're gonna get money for impact fees, since we're putting up money now, having so relaxed five, ten years, we'll get it back?
There'll be development impact fee, yes, yes, yes.
But, but as the news press, uh, communicates on this, I wanna be sure that it's noted that Loma Linda is doing this, not Redlands.
Yes.
Didn't you get, didn't you get Redlands to agree to some portion?
Yes, no, we, they, they gave us the, uh, the no fee permit.
Oh, they give us a free permit?
Gave us a permit.
And, and the same thing with the county flood control. The county flood control also give us a, a no fee permit, so.
Because in some other meetings I sit in on, Redlands kinda sits on a pedestal and.
Well, we, we, we let, we let them know because they gave us grief about the design and where to put a pole and, and what, what we did is we basically told them beggars can't be choosers, so, and then they finally relented. And it took a little bit of political pressure, I believe, to make that happen, but, um, the interesting thing I find is that we had to get permission from the Army Corps of Engineers because this is, believe it or not, an inland navigable waterway.
Really?
Yes.
And it's dry as a bone about ninety-nine percent of the time.
This is where to get a permit from Fish and Game, Fish and Wildlife, US Army Corps of Engineers, County Flood Control, and the City of Redlands.
Okay, timetable?
Yes, sir. The, the project is out to bid, award the contract, uh, next city council meeting, January twenty-third. Because it's gonna be pre-cast, uh, a box covert, it would take about three months to cast those boxes. And then the construction will be in, in May, when the, when my elementary school is closed for the summer, and have to be after April the fifteenth before we can work in a channel. So hopefully we complete by August.
And who has, who has responsibility for maintaining and installing the traffic lights?
We are.
We're going to maintain the traffic lights?
No, no, the traffic signal we installed maintained by the City of Redlands.
Okay, they've accepted that responsibility?
No, they are maintaining it right now, so.
Okay, but we're putting in new ones?
We're putting in new, uh, new traffic signal arms and pole at, at this corner and that corner.
But Redlands will take it over?
Yes, sir.
So total completion ti- time is like May to August?
Yes, sir.
August will be completely open?
And that's my goal.
What, what's the, that seems actually, I mean, that seems pretty aggressive, cause I.
Oh, yes, it's, it's.
It's to protect the school.
Yes.
No, I, I get the point.
Which is a stupid place to have a school, but that's not our issue.
What's the impact as far as traffic, and what, what, what should we expect?
Right, it, it will go to Park, it, it, it will go up California to Park Avenue and come up the next one, I think in New Jersey, and come around.
So it'll be, it'll be completely shut down for that period?
For, for, the, the shutdown part is probably shorter. It's just to, to, uh, deliver the box covert and lift it and put inside a channel.
Otherwise, there are no traffic.
Yes.
And when are they starting the Cal eighty-eight housing project?
They, like you heard tonight, they, they in the process of finishing up the, uh, all the improvement plan to submit it to the city for plan check.
But is this gonna be occurring, is there gonna be building on California simultaneous?
No, sir, no, sir.
They'll be later?
I think they'll be later, and, and they can come off, they can come off, uh, Redlands Boulevard too, so. Okay, so.
When, when, when do we anticipate that the California is going to be widened all the way through?
Yes, um, uh, as part of this process, we did, I did try to purchase this triangle piece of property from this property owner, but he just asked for way too much money. Uh, we offered him twenty thousand dollars, and they think, he asked like eight hundred thousand dollars, but the problem is, he really cannot use much of this land because if he were to do it, he has to widen.
Right.
California street himself.
Right, right.
All the way down to Park Avenue, and he has to widen Park Avenue. And he had to put in the improvement to the channel and raise the pad to, above the flood plain, and between the building setback, there's not that much room left.
This is the next stage. We're still gonna have a bottleneck.
Yes. So hopefully he can tire paying property tax and, and come talk to us. Okay, so this is, this is Redlands and, and California. Next is the off-ramp at Mountain View. The design is at ninety-five percent completed. We submit the plan to Caltrans for plan check, so hopefully I will get that plan check approved and go out to bid in April.
And just on a side note, unrelated to the intersection other than the business there, I recently went and had ice cream at the new ice cream place. It's amazing. Did a wonderful job there by the gas station.
The Mexican ice cream?
Yep, excellent ice cream.
Yeah, it's good.
Yes, so, for this proposed project is, is to add an, an additional lane to the, uh, the westbound off-ramp. So this way that the, the truck or car that wanna go right, go northbound, turn right, northbound, they can have a, a right turn movement.
Same. So if we can go back, so the basic change will be that we're gonna widen the off-ramp?
Yes, sir.
And we'll recalibrate the lights there?
No, sir. The light, the light, I have worked with Caltrans because we don't have control over the traffic signal.
Because the issue that we have is trucks get, you know, they're eager to make that turn.
Yes.
And they're out in the middle of the intersection.
Yes.
And the light turns red and it boogers everything else.
That's why we have, uh, the deputy out there giving ticket.
I haven't seen it.
Oh, yes, if you look at the report.
I'll be looking for you out there. Tomorrow morning at seven-thirty, I can get on that freeway and.
Not sure I'll be there, but, uh, they, they have written a couple of sites for, uh, impeded traffic, but to those trucks. They've also gone down and visited, uh, UPS and, uh, let them, let them, let them know that, that we'll be siding their trucks that do, uh, cause the congestion in the intersections.
The, the two issues that I have now run into repeatedly because of appointments I need to get on the freeway to get to is that, um, trucks exiting, going eastbound and exiting on the Mountain View exit, and then they turn and they're stuck in the middle of the intersection. That's been multiple times. The other is, then you go under the freeway and you have trucks coming from the east to the west that are turning into Loma Linda, and they sit there and block us. And that's happened to me not as often, but it's happened to me several times as well. And the whole place is boogered up until something starts to loosen.
Blame it on Jeff Bezos.
So.
He's worth a hundred and five billion, so he can help.
So the whole idea is.
That's always his trucks, though.
So for, for example, if you wanna get, get off eastbound off-ramp, so now you can do a right turn movement now to, to go south.
Yeah, that'll help, that'll help. But most of those trucks are going, are going north, not south.
That's why we're doing this. That, that's why we're doing this.
Cause right now you gotta drive on the phone.
Yes, and, and the funding for this project is paid for, will be paid for by Caltrans. Uh, we received a million dollar grant from them.
Okay, now, my understanding, though, is this is a temporary arrangement?
The, yes.
What's the, what is the permanent?
Thirty years.
Yeah, the, the, the. The permanent is to come up a different solution. Is you do a loop ramp, similar to what we did on Anderson and, and Tippecanoe?
Oh. Ron, I'm on the Sandbag Board, and, well, they call it Sabukta now, but I don't know why, but, um, this is not in the currently funded measures plan. So they're gonna have to pass a new Measure I, and then redo the, the prioritization of the intersections before this will ever even be considered. So you and I will be probably on the wrong side of the grass before this ever happens. So this is temp, and they told us, and they warned us, by doing this, you will make this project better and therefore be lower on the priority once they do decide, but it'll be so many decades from now that it's not.
The only thing I think that could change that is, is, um, um, like, more developed with Amazon and things like that. Making, making the, the area more, bigger profitable and more activity, that's going to force a change because they're gonna need the throughput, they're gonna need the, the volume, and I think.
Or just maybe getting better leadership on Sandbag.
Yeah, right.
It, it just seems so frustrating to me that, that.
Thank you.
Loma Linda is suffering from, from the plan that Redlands has to put up fifty tilt-up buildings over there that require all these trucks that come in, and there was been no consideration to the traffic implications. And, and it's a mess. It's an absolute mess.
Well, but this is the problem with only planning, only prioritizing intersections once every twenty or thirty years because things change. You know, there are things that are, and nobody's gonna give up their place in line for this.
We went from orange groves and, and, and.
And this thing is.
Vegetable fields to tilt-ups within about three years.
And the Nexus study says that this intersection is what percentage?
Seventy percent is Loma Linda.
Seventy percent for us, and, and, you know, almost nothing for San Bernardino, and it's a trivial amount for Redlands.
That's ridiculous.
So, but that's, that's the way the Nexus study was done twenty years ago, so.
I'd like to look at, oh, twenty years.
Twenty years ago, yes, sir. Like I said, if you plan it once every twenty or thirty years, and the problem is that it takes so long to fund and implement all of these projects, nobody's gonna say, "Oh, my project is clearly not as important as yours. I'll let you step in front of me." Nobody will ever do that.
Ron, we'll have nuclear holocaust before then, and we'll be able to lay new.
It's just for, for particularly people, I mean, we've got a lot of, of businesses on Mountain View. We've got the VA, and then we've got a whole bunch of stuff over there by Clark's and so forth. And, and it is becoming a, a terrible, terrible bottleneck, and.
That's why we're doing this.
All of these trucks that are.
Yes.
That are turning north to go to the tilt-ups in Redlands.
Yes.
Are creating the problem.
Ultimately, but ultimately, I think, uh, once California is fixed, that'll become the ingress and egress for residents and businesses in Loma Linda, and you leave more of the Amazon tilt-up traffic to Mountain View.
Well, if, if you want.
The problem is that, well.
If you wanna go to San Diego from here at rush hour.
No, I don't want.
If you do, it will tell, your, your phone will tell you the quickest way to get there is to go down to Calif, go down Barton to California, California to the freeway, and back over because Barton Road westbound is worse than this by far. That's probably the worst traffic jam in the Atlanta Empire right now, that jam up at Reggie Canyon. So we're looking at, how many ways are there to get out of Loma Linda? There's, there's Barton east-west, and then there are the three main arteries out to the freeway. And, or four, if you count Waterman, which is not us, but it's still, um, it's a nightmare, you know, getting out of town. So, so my advice is, let's build a whole bunch of nice things so we never have to leave.
Well, yeah, no, I'm there, I'm.
And, and then after we complete all of this, Caltrans already have a budget to come out and grind overlay the other two on-ramp. So they will come back, so these two will be have nice, all four. Look nice.
Okay, so when is this supposed to happen?
I'm, I'm, I'm hoping go out to bid in, in April or May, so be this summer, sir.
Okay, so that's the bid, and.
Award the contract i- in, in June and construction in July.
And do we have some, what's that? Do, do, do we have some sense of how long it'll take to complete it?
Oh, they're complete by a month, that's all. The, the construction part is easy. Okay, so back to this, I'm gonna start from the northeast corner and going west. We, we just talked about the, uh, this Citrus Trail, a hundred and thirty-one lot subdivision. That Steve Ludwig just mentioned that he is doing a final map and, and ready to submit the plan to the city for plan check. We have this thirty-five lot subdivision under construction. We have ninety lot, uh, subdivision that already removed all the orange trees and we're gonna start upgrading.
Is that in our city?
Yes, sir.
Orchard Heights?
Yes. But they only gotta do phase one. Uh, phase two is right next to the flood control channel right here, so they have to get a permit from FEMA and Fish and Game and so forth. Which is completed, slurry seal, all this housing tract, solid mission. We are gonna do a payment rehabilitation on Mountain View from the bridge. Bid opening next Tuesday, award the contract the twenty-third.
Are you gonna put chicken wire under the bridge?
No, we're just gonna write overlay.
To keep the pests out?
No, sir, it's grind overlay, and that will be similar to, uh, uh, Anderson from Barton to Lawton, and Curtis from Redlands Boulevard going north, is called a sec.
I'm sorry, you may be, you're reminding me of another project. And you may be getting to it, but what flood control improvements that we made on, um, Benton and underneath Redlands?
Yes.
And when was that completed? Remind me?
It was completed earlier this year, but when is this? No, last year, I'm sorry.
Right, and the purpose of that was to help with flow.
Drainage.
The flood that we had at the, uh.
That mine, with the rain that we passed today, have we had any issues that you're aware?
No, sir, I went out, actually checking myself.
Okay, thank you.
The whole idea was, this is, this is the, uh, VA. So Benton, we put a storm drain underneath, at, in the Benton, before it go underneath the, uh, the storm drain and go behind the basin center and come out on Van Louven and come out at behind the Almedigna Park.
That's where it flood.
And, and, and when the county flood control not maintain that inlet, it flood. So what we did was we built a bypass, storm drain pipe that go underneath the railroad track, come out here across Van Louven into the channel.
I see, okay.
And we completed that.
So would that help protect the academy next time?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we see we have a nuisance flow, a nuisance flow that will go behind the basin center, but a major flow will go north to, to the, to the channel.
Can we do in case there's enough rain where it still kinda builds up along those drains just behind the basin? Is there something more we can do?
We, what we did is we also put another cash basin at a parking lot in front of the, at the Almedigna Park. So the water will contain there instead of overflow across the park. Okay, we have, we have Palm Canyon, uh, uh, commercials under construction on Redlands Boulevard. A Marriott Hotel, just a certificate occupancy last week.
And what's that, the new hotel?
The new hotel.
They're open now?
Yes.
Oh, really?
And he in the process of submitting a plan for the third one. He already created the path, utilities are in.
What's the third one?
Is, is called, uh, Candlewood.
Oh.
So it's coming.
Same owner?
Yes, sir, Ralph Patel.
Wow.
We have a, a car wash on Redlands Boulevard, east of Anderson, under construction. We completed that, the restroom.
Under current construction?
Yes, sir, it's under construction.
Huh.
Uh, we completed a restroom building at Almedigna Park, the eighty-eight year apartment on Van Louven, under construction. Which has completed Campus Street widening, widening projects. Only thing left is we have to erase the sewer manhole.
Actually came, came, it looks pretty nice.
And we did it during the Christmas break, so it was.
It was very quick.
Yes.
I, I, I went down there after it was done, and I said, "When are they going to start?", and it was done.
Yeah, no, it was, it was.
They paved, they paved the street in one day. They paved University, they paved Campus Street, and Shepherdson Court in one day. It's a long day, but we got it done. We are in the process, we are in the process of putting in the water lateral, I think we completed on San Juan, and San Marcos, I'm sorry, San Marcos. So after it's complete, we will grind overlay the street and pave it, similar to what we did on Yodlee and Rosarita and so forth.
Jar, since we're talking about different projects, you did, you reminded me of something that a resident's actually complained with me regarding, um, Prospect Street. Okay, on Prospect, pretty close to the VA, and specifically Prospect and Bel Air.
Yes.
Uh, the complaint is that either the light's not working there, or the trees are covering our lights.
Kind of.
And it's extremely dark at night, and apparently, I don't know if the sheriff's aware of this, but we've had a few folks that have actually been attacked walking through that area. So we need to see if we can either improve the lighting in that neighborhood, but also we may wanna start having more patrols in the area as well, so. Just something that, a, a resident approached me at a gas station and spoke at length to me about that, so I just wanted to pass that on.
And then, like I said, Anderson pavement we have from, from Barton to Lawton, and then we just completed, we installed a water main down on Huron from Lawton all the way to Pecan, and now the contractor in the process put in the fire hydrants, the water laterals, and after it's complete, those water line, they will grind overlay the street. And after it's complete, those water line that will grind overlay the street. So there's a lot going on and, sorry for the inconvenience, like Mrs. Olson called and complained a little bit.
To our guests out here, you can see there's a lot going on in a little city of Loma Linda.
Oh, huh, Sprint Honda, the Antique Mall on the south side of Redlands Boulevard. They, Mike Christensen sold it to Sprint Honda.
So they're their dealership?
So, Conrad can give you an update on that.
They're going to sell antique cars?
Well, actually, if you drive past there, it's all chain linked off. They've cleared the old buildings. They're rehabbing the old antique mall just for a facelift, a new glass and a cleanup. That'll be temporarily the car storage for their overflow. But their long-term plan is at some point to bring in another dealership and to shift all of their repair work to where the antique mall is. So that'll be their maintenance for whatever the two or three dealerships they have under that umbrella. So it's kind of a longer term, but temporary, at least that mess with the antique mall and we'll get a nice clean building and some parking there.
And where are we at with the Enterprise moving into the big lot?
We have not heard from them for a while, so.
What does that mean?
Whether they're going someplace else, not going anywhere else, that's kind of fizzled and they've left it at the roadside for now. So we'll, those things tend to come and go. So we'll see if that picks up steam again or what their business model is with that.
Okay, you mentioned about the landscape on Mission Road. We just ordered 300 Star Jasmine, so we can be plant Star Jasmine on the median. And we also, we already planted about 300 Mexican Buddha Paradise and we have 300 more coming. So we already planted, it would be more on Barton Road median, on Lawton, on Beaumont, so. All sidewalk.
Who maintains that?
We are. And subcontractor, but majority is public works in the, with the car to sidewalk, we have been inspecting, doing inspection on all the sidewalk. And instead of just doing inspection, we actually went ahead of inspection with grinder. We grind the sidewalk or trim the trees, the bushes and so, and that's part of requirement by JPIA. So we're doing that right now. And it's all by public work staff, so.
Very good, very good. This is the kind of report I enjoy because it tells me that we're maintaining, not only maintaining, but improving some of our basic services.
And none of this are general fund. Anderson, Mountain View, Curtis, the funding came from SB 1. The gas tax that just passed that you and I had to pay since November.
So if we reverse it, we'll still get these projects, but not any further ones?
Correct.
Well, there's an initiative, ballot initiative, getting signatures.
And a recall.
And I signed it. I signed it and I encourage all of you who are voters to sign it too.
Really? That's in his there?
There's a ballot initiative to reverse SB 1, the gas tax.
Hey, if it beautifies the community, I'm all for it. I'll pay an extra penny for my gallon.
Will you pay a penny, will you pay a penny for my gallon? He'll pay a, will he pay for the $100 a year they charge for my little dinky Fiat?
I know. My car registration went up an extra $100 too.
Let's not get into taxes or we'll start talking Trump's new.
Thank God we got a price cut from the Republicans. Thank God for Trump. Okay, so that's item six. Is there any further discussion by councilmen or officers? If not, the city council agenda is adjourned, but we still have two other meetings.
Well, we still have the closed session items.
So we're not adjourned yet.
And just for clarification, Jarb, you mentioned that we have another council meeting on January 23rd? Okay, and then after that, when's the next one in February?
February 13.
13, okay. And that's the one and only one in February? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the city council is continued until we finish with closed session. So we will move now to our successor agency agenda. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public on items not on that agenda? Seeing, hearing none, the consent calendar is there for your approval or not?
I'll move it.
Motion second. Any further discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. That agenda is adjourned. Housing authority agenda, are there any items to be added or deleted? Would the public like to speak on any items not on the agenda? Hearing none, the consent calendar.
I have a couple of questions. And I know we moved kind of quickly, but I'm just noticing just a trend. Can you, we spend, looks like on the, on the housing authority, I know we've already gone through it, but just to give me some clarity here, we spend, looks like $3,600 on legal fees on that and then on the successor agency, we spend another $2,000 on legal fees. Can you help me understand between those two? What is it that that law firm is doing with those two agencies that we're not really doing very much with?
You wanted to go first, uh, this is Mark. Right? Yes, for example, we still work with him on the Mary Erickson, the deal that we work with on, for the housing. We also deal with the people that want to sell the house. So he does all the agreement and then does some example. Anything else?
And on the successor agency, we're reimbursed for that by, in our ROBS.
Correct.
So we're getting reimbursed by the taxation. So that's not coming out of our personal budget?
Yes.
Not that it's concerning, it's just, it's interesting because I feel like for two agencies that technically don't have a lot going on, we're spending a lot of money. I mean, you do the math, that adds up really fast.
You're in the wrong field, I think is the answer to that.
But we're in the, you know, we're in the business of looking at.
Attorneys make a lot of money, so.
I know, but we need to look into what can we do to try to limit some of that if we can.
He's disagreeing.
I feel like we're spending more money on that than our own attorney. Thank you.
Okay, so getting back to our housing, does anybody have any motion or second on the consent calendar?
Second.
No, we're not on housing, we're on redevelopment. We already did housing. Okay, there's a motion to second, any discussion, hearing none.
Are we on housing or successor?
You want successor now? Yeah. Okay, is there any opposition to the motion and second on the consent calendar? I hear no oppositions, that's approved unanimously and then we are adjourned. So that's the last of those two. We will recess to our chambers for closed session. If you choose to stay, then someone will stick their head out and say, nothing to report or something along those lines in about half an hour.
Was this interesting for you?